Oh.
May it might be right for once.
I mean, 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 it might be right for once.
Hi, how's it going?
Good thanks. Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, well, I got big shoes to fill here.
Hey there, Gene.
Mr. Joe. I saw you out there in the rough weather the other day.
Yeah, I was out there. They pulled Brian's mooring and it's and the chain snapped.
Really?
Yeah.
Kind of unusual, isn't it?
Well, he was told by a diver to get it out last fall or it would go to snap.
Ah. And it did.
Yep.
And I know Bill, yeah, Bill got his all set.
He's waiting for Friday morning.
Yep. Yeah, I was gonna try to help him do some painting on it. But the weather hasn't allowed.
Um, he and he and Frank were working on the engine today.
Yeah, I thought they had that all squared away.
Yeah, just changing some filters. He's got time to kill.
He would say not a lot.
When's Bill going in? Gene?
Pardon?
When is Billy going in the water?
Brad Hill.
Yeah, um, or Joe, do you know when um, Miletty's going in?
Friday morning.
Friday?
Yeah, he and uh, the Miletty boat have to go in first.
Yeah.
They're going in early in the morning.
Cool.
It'll get to you, don't worry.
The later the better for me.
I know, gives you time to paint.
Do you have a lot of work left there, Josh? You want mute?
Yeah, um, yeah, I've been um, had a fair bit of engine work, which is, hopefully will be wrapped up Friday. Then I can start to work on the actual boat. I'll get there.
That's a beautiful boat.
Yeah, I like it.
I'm sure you do.
I'm gonna go back on mute till we start, because I'm snacking.
Hey, they did a great job on the ramp.
Uh, they could go further down.
Yeah, they intend to, but they couldn't catch it this trip.
It's better than it was.
Pardon?
It's better than it was.
Much, yeah.
We're just gonna have to repeat this in 30 days.
You could almost put a lawnmower to it there for a while.
I know. I was down there. When I launched my boat, I needed the four-wheel drive to get the empty trailer up the ramp.
Really?
Yeah, I was spinning my wheels.
Yeah, it was bad. It's a long winter. It's a long winter.
It ain't over yet.
No.
May is not a good boating season.
No, it can have its uh, it's it's off-offseason moments.
Yeah, I just think this weekend will be the best. Yeah, I just think this weekend will be the best time.
Get some bad, get some bad weather coming, haven't we?
No, we got good weather for the weekend.
Oh, good. Great.
Maiden hit seventy someplace.
Okay, gentlemen, I think it's about six thirty. Um, I see that Gene and Josh and Tony are all on, so um, I'll open the Board of Selectments meeting um, Wednesday, May third, six thirty PM, open.
You're not the chairman yet.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
Just an attempted coup?
Just practicing, Gene.
Go ahead, finish it, finish it up, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Gene, bye.
No, I'm good, please.
Uh, okay, well, um. I guess the announcements, uh, my, uh, first of all, any opening comments? Josh?
Um, well, congratulations, Gene, on your reelection. Good to have the band back together, even though we never never broke up, so uh, yeah, congratulations, that's my only comment. And thank you, and thank you for um, you know, serving another term. I know it's, um, you know, it's a commitment, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, Jane, any comments?
No, I I just, you know, I think the business as usual, I don't think anything changes with the shifting of titles. I think, uh, as I told people, I think, uh, it's um been a a a good run for the last couple of years, not just last year, and I expect that to continue. And I appreciate that the fact that that nobody ran against me, uh, which kind of, I think, bodes well on on all of us for for doing as good a job as as I think we've done, so. That's what I know.
Good, thank you, Jane. And again, thanks for stepping up for another three years. I know how difficult that can be sometimes, so appreciate the job that you you've done and the job that you'll continue to do.
Thanks, Mark.
Um, okay, with that, I'll do the announcements. Uh, two thousand twenty-three resident parking stickers now available for purchase at the hat.org. Parking stickers are ten dollars. All outstanding bills must be paid to the town and a census must be completed. The compost area open on Wednesdays, Saturdays. United and the P M two thousand twenty-three. Parking sticker required is public works page at the hat.org for a full list of acceptable materials. Curbside uh, leaf pickup on Mondays until June, May twenty-second. These must be in biodegradable bags only, and at your curbside by seven AM. Visit the public works page at the hat.org for more information. Recycling for metal, white goods, B and computers last Saturday of each month until October twenty-fifth. Eight AM, twelve PM, behind the DPW garage and Flash Road. Two thousand twenty-three resident sticker required. Uh, visit the Public Works Department, the hat.org for acceptable materials and fees. Employment opportunities, part-time internship at Town Hall and DPW seasonal crew members. Visit the employment page at the hat.org for job descriptions and requirements. The annual town meeting is set for Saturday, May twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, starting at twelve thirty at um, Town Hall. Last day to register to vote for town meeting is Wednesday, May second, two thousand twenty-three. The rate, the rate cost, uh, Bud Drive is Friday, May twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, from one PM to six PM at the hot Town Hall. Registration and appointments are required. Visit the public health page or community calendar at the hot.org for registration, instructions, and QR code. Available scholarships, the Bob and Janet Monley, the Hut, Open Club, American Legion, the Jennifer J. Harris scholarships, and the Lieutenant Tommy Hutton Christmas Parade scholarships. Visit the scholarship page at the hot.org for applications and contact information. Okay, we need new business to make this official, Gene?
Yeah, you you little drum roll.
Go ahead.
I moved at the Board of Selectment vote to appoint Mark Cullen in as the Chairman of the Board of Selectment.
Do we have a second?
Josh says, but Josh, you're on you.
Uh, okay, I'll second it.
I'm sorry, uh, seconded.
You can second it, Mark.
Seconded. Did you get that?
Yes, I got it. Almost seconded. Um, all in favor, roll call vote.
Josh, answer mine.
Gene Canty, I.
I move at the Board of Selectment vote to appoint Gene Canty as Vice Chairman of the Board of Selectment.
Seconded?
Motion's been made and seconded.
I don't mean to be a uh, the stick in the mud here, but um wouldn't I become the Vice Chair?
Yeah, I was, yeah. Yeah, I think, yeah, you're right. Uh, let me, let me, let me correct that.
Well, Mark, what, what, you were just the recording secretary, right?
No, I was.
Kristen went through this. Was you were, Josh?
Yep.
No, I was the recording secretary, Josh.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, I think it rotates the other way around. So it's, you kind of, you move, um, you move down the less, and then you're the chairman, you know, going into your final year.
Oh, yeah, so, so certainly Mark is the chairman this year.
Yeah.
And was the Vice Chairman last year.
I was the recording secretary last year.
Oh, yeah, you were the, you were the Vice Chairman, Josh.
Really?
At the top of the, if you look at the top of the meeting notice.
Um, I didn't realize I uh, I was one heartbeat away from Chairman. Um, all right, um, yeah.
Okay.
Josh, Josh, we could work something out if you want.
No. I'm okay, I was thinking to rotate it the other direction.
Motion's are made and seconded. Um, all in favor?
Josh, answer mine.
Mark, Mark, all right. Jane, you want to make this motion for Josh?
I moved at the Board of Selectment vote to appoint Josh Antrim as the recording secretary of the Board of Selectment.
Seconded? Uh, motions were made, made and seconded, all in favor?
Gene Canty, I.
And Mark Cullen and I, okay. Okay, we have um, some appointments to make to the qualifier, right, um, um, for the fire department. Anyone care to make that motion?
Sure, I moved the Board of Selectment vote to approve the appointments of Fernando Beaz, Trent Gallagher, and David Ferriera, uh, as firefighter with the not fire department.
Second.
Motion's are made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? I read the little bio, uh, bios, Tony, they look well qualified. I see that Trent and David are well, David is a Lynn resident, but Trent is a hot resident, and Fernando is a, is a full-time firefighter in um in Salem, so they look all very qualified, so congratulations for the chief for finding these um.
Chief Antrim's on the, on the call as well.
Okay. Uh, Chief, you want to say anything about these guys?
Um, no, you summed it up nicely, Mark, and uh, thank you all. Yeah, um. Uh, Fernando is a little outside our normal response area. He lives in Salem, but he's already trained. He's a full-time firefighter there, and he's looking to get some more experience and training here, uh, so we're happy to have him help. Um. And Trent is a hot resident. Uh, he got out of the Navy recently, um, so he's excited to join the department, and then um David, who's a Lynn resident, uh, has a lot of family in the fire service in Saugus and Masport. Um, so, yeah, he's, they're, they're all very excited to get going, and we're happy to have them, so thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any further discussion on the motion?
I want to compliment the chief on, you know, his his uh, work on, you know, refilling the roster of qualifying men. Uh, he's been on, you know, a few times over the last few months here, uh, has been doing a great job, you know, recruiting and and getting some, uh, you know, new bodies on the, on the crew, so good work, chief.
Okay, any further discussion on motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Josh, answer mine.
Gene Canty, I.
Mark Cullen and I. We have some uh, meeting minutes to approve. Someone want to make the motion?
I moved at the Board of Selectmen. Oh, go ahead, Gene.
I moved at the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the meeting minutes from January fourth, two thousand twenty-three and January the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Seconded.
Motion's renewed, seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor?
Josh, answer mine.
Gene Canty, I.
Mark Cullen and I. Josh, you want to take this, the uh, the approval of the event request?
Yes, um, I moved at the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the following event requests. The Apollo Club of Boston Concert on Sunday, June fourth, twenty twenty-three, at the main hall of the Nahat Town Hall, starting at three PM. The Nahat Recreation Summer Park Program, starting July fifth, twenty twenty-three, from nine AM to twelve PM at the Flash Road Playground. And the Nahat Village Church Peach Village Summer Camp from August fourteenth to August eighteenth from nine AM to three thirty PM at the Flash Road Playground. And one more, uh, the Classical Concert Violin and Piano, sponsored by the Nahat Cultural Council on September ninth, twenty twenty-three, starting at seven PM at the Elland Wood Chapel.
Seconded.
Motion's renewed, seconded. Um, discussions on the motion? Um, these seem to be reoccurring. Uh, Tony, I I noticed that the Nahat Villas Church seems to be a new um, new event request. Um, I hope they're very successful in um, their, their camp, their summer camp, so. We didn't have this yesterday, did we?
No, no, this is new. Uh, we double-checked that it didn't overlap with the Summer Park Program. Um, so, which is good, so um, it should, you know, we hope, wish them some success. Um, but yeah, we did, you know, double-check that there wasn't a, an overlap.
I'm sure the Edward Sisters are involved in this somehow, some way.
Most likely.
Coordination had been completed before we asked the question.
Yeah, I hope they have success. Um, any further discussion on the motion? No. Seeing none, all in favor?
Josh, answer mine.
Gene Canty, I.
Mark Cullen and I. Gene, you want to take this next one?
Uh.
Operating hours.
I moved at the, the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the request from the Atlantic Function Corporation, DBA Ocean View, Zero Willow Road in the hot mass to change the operating hours on Sundays from twelve to PM to twelve AM to the new hours of ten AM to one AM. And to approve the town administrator to sign the Licensing Authority Certification.
Seconded.
Motion's renewed, seconded. Um, discussion. Tony, can you give us some background on this?
Yeah, I would uh, I I would rec, even though the A B C C doesn't require us to host a full hearing for just the hours change on an existing liquor license, I don't think it would hurt if you wanted to, you know, open this up for some comment from the, from anyone that's on the call. Um, the, the, you know, there's some Sunday uh, breakfast brunch type activity that occurs. Uh, so they wanted to, you know, adjust their liquor license to earlier to ten AM from noon uh, to earlier ten AM. Uh, looks like they're also asking for an extra hour, uh, you know, from midnight to one AM. Um. So, you know, I don't know, Dan, unless you, you know, as council suggests otherwise, would it would it hurt to kind of open this up to, you know, anyone that's on the call that might have some um, comments?
No, not at all. That's a great idea.
Okay, um, if there's anybody uh, on the call that want, want, want to speak on this subject, um, Tony, if you could unmute them. Identify yourself and your address, please. I guess, nobody?
I have nobody.
Okay, motions renewed, made and seconded, any further?
Yeah, yes, um, so I talked to Tony about this earlier today. Um, I don't have any problem with the earlier opening on Sunday. Um, what I, what I don't know about is the making the closing from midnight to one AM, whether that's been, um, uh, well, I don't know what their permit is for the rest of the week. Um, and if, I guess my, I'm sort of started with my words here, but I I think we should seek neighborhood input on whether uh, the hour should be extended from midnight to one AM to see if there's objections from the Butters or nearby neighbors. Um, if that is later than the other nights of the week. I don't know what they, what their card hours are for Monday through Saturday night. For example, I'd feel better if they were already at one AM, but um, you know, it's a work night and um, you know, there's music and whatnot, so I'd like to understand um what the neighbors think.
Alice uh, was having trouble unmuting when we went to the public. Can you mind if I unmute her?
Go ahead.
Yes, hi, thank you. Alice Court, Seven Valley Road. I I I thank Josh for making those points, because that's what I was trying to say. Um, I I know some of the neighbors, and um, I think that those are very relevant issues, that it's um, it's a work night, and uh, to extend it to one AM, I think is really um, has the potential for being quite, quite problematic, and so a public, I I don't know if the neighbors have been notified about this request of uh, increasing the hours, but I certainly think they should have the opportunity to be informed of it and um, given an opportunity to respond. I don't li- live right down that street, but I, you know, I I think people on the street would want to weigh in a little bit.
I I think Alice and Josh raised a good point there, and and my question on it is, and I don't know this, are operating hours any different than entertainment hours?
I don't know.
I don't know.
I assume they're, I assume they're the same.
Tony, um, when's our next meeting? What date is our next meeting?
In in two weeks.
What's the date?
I think it's seventeenth.
Uh, perhaps we could, uh,
Yeah, seventeenth.
Perhaps we could approve this motion until, from now to the seventeenth, because I'm not sure if he has already scheduled something or not. Uh, and we can revisit it, notify the Butters, um, on our next meeting. Um, would that be okay with you, Josh and Gene?
That's a good point. I mean, honestly, I'd rather just defer the vote until the seventeenth, because it, uh, unless, you know, I mean, I I don't want to upset plan if he has some, something in the next two weeks. Um, that'd be different.
Knowing Mike, he wouldn't plan that way, you know what I mean? I doubt he has something contingent upon this vote. I know, you know, when it came to us, he was more concerned about, you know, the earlier hour extension
Yeah.
brunch activity. Um, so, you know, I could, we could either postpone the whole vote or, you know, or amend it to just extend from noon to ten AM, and and then I can go back to him and and ask him, you know, if uh, you know, the extra hour on the other end is very important to him, and if it is, you know, that we seek a butter input.
Yeah, well, we just postponed it at this point, um, and notify him as such, and perhaps we can notify the people in the immediate neighborhood um, to tune in on the seventeenth, that if they have any concerns. Also, uh, could you check in with the uh, with the police chief and see if there has been any issues in the past, uh, what his concerns may be?
Okay.
I guess, I guess, I guess the third item would be um, what his operating hours are Monday through Saturday.
Yes.
Just, just for context.
Okay.
So, Dan, it's uh, whoever made the motion should just withdraw?
Uh, withdraw or a vote to deny, one of the two. Um, it doesn't really matter, the end result is the same.
What do we, um, let's see, uh. What do we, let's see, I guess I, I made the motion, right?
I would just vote to withdraw for now.
All right.
I made the motion and I would suggest the thing, but we withdraw.
Okay.
Second, do I have a second on that, please? Josh?
Seconded.
Motion's were made and seconded to withdraw this item into our next meeting. Any further discussion on the motion?
None.
Seeing and hearing none, all in favor?
Josh Andrew Mike.
Gene Canty I.
Mark Cullen I. Okay, we have a proclamation to read here. This is on Children's Mental Health Week Proclamation. And this is something I think we do pretty much every year, so I think it's important. So while I read it, whereas according to the United States Department of Health and Human Services, one in five children is diagnosed with a mental health condition and whereas good mental health is a key component in a child's healthy development and Children's Mental Health Week shines a light on this important matter. And whereas, research has shown that early identification and treatment of mental health conditions among children and youth and the involvement of family members in their, their care and treatment provide children and youth better opportunities. Excuse me. I just lost that. Hold on one second. Someone was chiming in on me. Sorry about that. Whereas early identification and treatment includes timely services and supports for children and youth from a fully integrated team of diverse resources, including their families, physicians, schools and local communities. And whereas appropriate treatment is family-driven, youth-guided, culturally appropriate and equitable across varying communities and populations. And whereas, approximately treating the mental health needs of children, youth and families today is fundamental to the future of our nation and to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Therefore, now therefore, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Nahat, Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim March 7th to, excuse me, May 7th to May 13th, 2023, as Children's Mental Health Week and urge our citizens, businesses and organizations to promote this year's theme. Accept, advocate, the theme is accept, advocate, act, because awareness is not enough in order to help increase equitable access to appropriate treatment and support for children, youth and their families with mental health needs.
That's a mouthful.
Be nice to, well, it's, it's this week, right? So just thinking ahead, maybe it'd be nice to plan some activities or functions or programs, something more than reading the proclamation. Something to think about. I guess we have a year to think about it, but you know, to, to sort of add a little to the proclamation, just a thought.
Yeah, that's a good idea, Josh. I know that I was reading the other day that there's a, the Commonwealth has put up a new helpline that people are able to call, it's free of charge, who are trying to access, you know, mental health services. And perhaps we could get advertised what that helpline is in case people feel they need to have some help and they can reach out to that number. Tony, maybe, maybe we could put that on a website or something along those lines.
Yeah. Maybe it's something that the Johnson School would like to participate in some capacity.
Yeah, that's a good idea, Josh. Maybe we could collaborate with the school committee next year and perhaps invite some people to come in, talk to students. Might, it might work.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, ongoing business?
A couple of things if I could. Nine Little Nahat Road. Where are we with that? Tony, is there anything we need to discuss?
I'll defer to Dan. We had an executive session meeting last week to, you know, talk about the current offer that's on the table and, you know, the the current private offer for purchase of the property. And with that, we discussed, you know, the agreement that the town will have with HUD on what portion of that, of that sale will come to the town. As we've talked about in the past, there's, you know, some deferred taxes owed to the town. And with that, there's a lot of interest included in it. And so we're trying to recoup those funds as a part, as part of the, the sale of the property. But I don't have an update as to you know, how the, the sale process went between, you know, between HUD and the new and the, and the, and the party that's, you know, offering the purchase. Dan, do you have anything further to add to that?
I do. Just today I was in touch with HUD and there's some delay on their end, have nothing to do with us. They need some sort of confirmatory deed with regard to denying a hot vote, which has, again, nothing to do with us. We're, we're, we're good to go. And I should note that our agreement with HUD also resolved a potential litigation against HUD, which is great for all parties. So we're waiting for them to get that confirmatory deed and then close. It hasn't closed yet, but everything looks fine. A confirmatory deed is nothing unusual. We did it on the Coast Guard housing just to make sure everything is clean. So it's not at all unusual. So we're, we're still good to go. No, no problems at all.
So I would just, you know, I would just say that the town and HUD seem to be on the same page. And, you know, we're certainly not, you know, pumping the brakes at all or trying to, you know, impede on the process of the sale. It seems like we're in, you know, lockstep with HUD. And, you know, so, so as long as they're able to come to an agreement on the sale, then we'll be able to look to the next step and make an announcement on, you know, how much of that sale will be coming back to the Town of Nahat.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Dan. Good job on that. Any further?
Yeah, just a couple. The town, the town warf, Tony, I was just at the beginning telling everybody what a great job the DPW did on the ramp. Needs to go a little deeper, but I think we have to wait for a very, very low tide for that. But everybody is real happy with it, so you can pass that along.
Well, yeah, we came up with a schedule. You know, the challenging part is that we are looking for the lowest of tides that occur during the workday. So Monday through Friday, you know, seven to three. That's when we, you know, and that's when we're, and ideally, you know, that, that low, low, low tide is hitting, is hitting somewhere around like 10:00 a.m. So we are, you know, we're chasing it down and then we're getting the bottom, you know, get hitting the bottom of the ramp, cleaning it up. So, but we put together a, you know, a schedule and it'll be posted at the Harbor Masters office. So folks are aware of when that, when that's going to occur. Basically, it's once a month.
Yeah, but even in its current condition, they did a really nice job. One other, go ahead, George.
I was just gonna say, it's good to remember that, you know, this, this is not something that has always happened, right? The pressure washing of, of the ramp at the wharf. So you know, we're lucky that it's happening at all. You know, I've been using the ramp my whole life and like, you know, a few years ago, this wasn't happening at all. So while it's not always perfect, it's always way better than it used to be. So I just thought I'd mention that.
Especially the old wooden ramp. We used to get splinters.
That I don't remember. I don't know when that was.
I, I do remember making visits to Dr. DeClara's office and pulled splinters up.
Yeah, he was very sympathetic, Dr. DeClara, I'm sure.
Not really.
I, I think Tony developing the schedules helped, will help a lot.
Yeah, definitely. I know, I know when it starts to get slippery, people wonder, you know, what's it going to happen? And that, you know, being able to refer the schedule helps. So, yeah, great job, DPW, as always.
Thank you.
Tony, one other thing, the electronic speed signs. Are we getting an update on those?
You mean the one, the one on the hot road up by Little Nahat?
Yes.
Yep, we have a new one. It's in stock. It's on the list of to be reinstalled. We're probably likely going to move it a little bit closer to Little Nahat Road because, you know, once the bus stop was remodeled there, the signage kind of was getting in the way anyways. Unfortunately, those, you know, the brackets that come with that, with those signs are, they're not ideal. They're not, they're not strong enough. I mean, essentially, we had some really high winds and it ripped it off of the pole and it smashed on the ground. So we bought a new one and we hope to have it installed soon.
Great, excellent. The last thing I have was the barrels. Are we looking at the, giving out barrels or having barrels available, trash barrels?
You mean in the parks or for curbside collection?
For curbside.
Oh, so after, you know, I think after town meeting, I want to have some, you know, published notice of that topic. It can be done during the Board of Selectmen meeting. You know, the, we're, we're trying to think of ways to reduce costs. As you know, as you probably recall, the last meeting, we talked a lot about composting. I have a meeting with the members from SWN tomorrow. You know, so I think after town meeting, we'll have, you know, at least one, maybe two segments during your Board of Selectmen meeting where we'll be talking about curbside collection.
Great, excellent.
Tony, what time is that meeting tomorrow? I was gonna ask you about that. I'll try to make it.
One o'clock. It's by Zoom, so I'll resend it to you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Josh?
Uh, no.
Okay. See. Back and forth. Specifically, he's pointing, any update on that, Josh? I know I have a deposition on June 15th.
Yeah, and mine's on June 29th. I had put a call into the attorneys just like an hour before the meeting and few minutes ago, while we're, while we're already meeting, Jim Asterman called back, but obviously couldn't take the call. So yeah, so the, the discovery phase has been extended and the depositions that, that were originally going to be over by now, were pushed out. Some have occurred already, but Mark's and mine are now in June, mine at the end of June. So this schedule continues to stretch, but no change to the basic outline.
Okay, great. Thanks, Josh. Town Administrator's report.
Yes, thank you. I got a report from Zach today. I asked him to give me a little bit of a spring report on, you know, the things that the DPW has accomplished over the last couple of weeks and things that they plan to accomplish over the, you know, the coming weeks. Because I know as the weather warms up and folks are, you know, walking around town, we send, we tend to see a lot of requests come in this time, this time of year. And, you know, they're doing, the DPW is, is, is really working hard, doing, getting a lot done. So Zach sent me a nice comprehensive list. If, if you don't mind, I would like to, you know, read from it.
Go ahead.
You know, so this is what they've accomplished over the last, I would say, month or, you know, a few weeks to a month. They removed weed control fabric at the invasive vegetation spot at East Point and had, the area's been seeded and erosion control blanket has been installed. They completed the Fort Rockman slope restoration project, including existing trail maintenance and creation of new walking trails. That was a CPC project. And they've completed the ninth hole side restoration of Bear Pond. They've begun the process of restoring walking trails and opening up the ocean side of Bailey's Hill. And that's also a CBC project. I actually walked through there today. It looks really, really good. Got to, I need to come up with some ways, some ideas of how to promote it because people really should, you know, take a walk, you know, through Bailey's Hill and take a look at the work that's been done in there. It looks, it looks amazing. It's like a hidden gem back there. They're nearing the completion of the restoration of the former Tri Mountain wastewater pump station building. So the building at the bottom of Tri Mountain Road has been re-roofed, repainted. It has a, a new door being installed soon. Vegetation, the old vegetation's been removed. New vegetation will be installed. A new paint on the exterior and interior of the Flash Road bathroom facility. Installed drainage and a walking path along the new Flash Road basketball and tennis courts. Received, they, we, we were, thanks to Senator Crichton and Representative Capano, we received an earmark and were able to purchase a new side-by-side sidewalk plowing, sidewalk plowing four-by-four piece of equipment, a little John Deere TV, which we'll be using, you know, you know, for other, for other purposes as well. But a new piece of equipment has been been installed into the fleet. Restored lower little leaf fields with new edges and new clay playing surfaces. Those fields look better than they've had in all the time. Opened up short beach access points, installed new dune grass, rebuild, rebuilding dune and access points, new signposts installed at each access point. Tudor Beach ramp and the, and installed access stairways. Clean and prepped all the town planting beds. Completed mulch install and full spring cleanups at town hall and the library. Blue Beach Rock and Sand from Tudor Beach, Time Out Road Beach and Marjoram Park. And all those areas have been topsoil and reseeded. Repainted the trash barrels, you know, for the parks. Opened and cleaned the public bathrooms and a number of other activities, including townwide grass cutting, leafbag collection, barrel collection, catch basin repairs. And in the, in the coming weeks, we, we are, hope to see some, the new thermoplastic roadlines for the areas that were repaved last fall. So from the bank to Pond Street, as well as the stretch of the main road that wasn't paved. A new signage, including the speed sign on the hot road. Gene, you got, you, you were ahead of me on that one. Plus, plus, you know,
That doesn't happen often.
Yeah. Replacing old signs, adding new signs, this, you know, a lot of the street traffic signs that were identified by the sign study. And townwide mulching of planting beds. And then, of course, you know, it's the push to prepare for Memorial Day. You know, at the end of the month. So, you know, I want to give a shout out to the entire You know, I want to give a shout out to the entire DPW crew, uh, they do a tremendous job and they go working really hard. Um, and, and for all the residents, you know, we, we've been getting, you know, we, we get your, um, uh, requests, we're, you know, trying to schedule things as, as best we can, um, and get to everything as fast as we can.
Thank you, Tony, um, yes, and, um, pass along our thanks to, uh, Zach, um, I've stopped her a few times and told him what a great job even the school have been doing. It's very noticeable, um, as you go around town, so. They clearly are.
So, Mike.
No, go ahead, Gene.
Tony, one, one thing I've been asked about twice now is the road leading into the wharf, um, from right near the pump house there, there's some, some serious holes. Is, is there any way to temporarily, until we do something more stable, some temporary repairs we can make to that?
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll have Zach take a look at it.
Yeah, you will, you'll see right away what I'm talking about.
Yeah, that's, that, I've noticed the same thing, Gene, like, right, especially right around at the end of, like, Joel Marie's driveway. Yeah, pretty bad, but it looks like it, um, could be helped with a temporary patching. Um, Tony, would you be able to repeat, uh, what you said about the line painting on the hot road?
New, uh, thermoplastic roadlines from the bank to Pond Street on the newly paved pavement, as well as the stretch of the main road that was not paved.
Okay, thanks, yeah, I was noticing that the non-newly paved part, um, was in need of that, so that's.
Basically, in between, in between, you know, Little Nahat and Spring Road.
Yeah, correct, yeah, that, that was looking a little.
And crosswalk.
Non-existent.
And crosswalks and all those, uh, as well, being installed.
All right, thanks.
Um, and, um, yeah, so DPW's, uh, been working really hard and, you know, I also, you know, while, while I'm here commending the DPW, you know, I, I also wanna commend, you know, the fire department and the police department, you know, they, they too, um, you know, it, it may not seem like it, but they are also in a gearing up for summer mode, you know, dealing, doing all sorts of trainings and coordination and planning, because as you all know, with ocean rescue, um, training on the fire side and just the, you know, the sheer increase of, you know, activity that occurs on the causeway and in town during the summer and with new employees coming on, on board, um, you know, they, they too are in this, uh, kind of prep for summer mode as well, you know, so, um, shout out to the, uh, police and fire department as well.
Just speaking of, um, speaking of prep for Memorial Day, um, one more shout out to, um, Orfinger and Harbor Master, Rob Tibbo, you know, he does a great job, like coordinating, uh, getting all the boats out of there on time and make sure, making sure everyone has a plan and, you know, asking people like me, do you have a date, do you have a hauler, all that stuff, so, um, yeah, thanks to Rob for.
That's a great point, he does a great job. Thank you.
Yeah, and I thought you were gonna go with, um, Memorial Day Committee too, because, you know, they've been meeting constantly and getting ready for our, um, you know, parade on, on Memorial Day and, and the ceremonies and, uh, they've been, there's a lot of, lot of work involved in that, so I assume, I assume our next meeting on the seventeenth will, will have a lot of announcements and, um, discussion on that.
That's great.
I, uh, I also just wanted to quickly touch on, you know, the town meeting is, is coming up on the twentieth. You know, so we, what I, I typically will host some community meetings, uh, information sessions uh, for our residents who might want to, you know, listen or ask questions and get prepared ahead of time, uh, before town meeting. So those, I'm gonna be hosting those, uh, on the next two Mondays, which is the eighth and the fifteenth. They're on the community calendar, they're both at six o'clock. Both, you'll be able to, uh, tune in via Zoom and they'll be broadcasted. Uh, the fifteenth, I might do as a hybrid, if anyone wants to, you know, come into the town hall. Um, and I'm also gonna add, on, on Fridays, the next two Fridays, the twelfth and the nineteenth, I'm gonna add some, uh, from ten AM to twelve PM, so from, from ten AM to noon, uh, two hours of kind of open office hours in the town hall, uh, with me, so that for anyone that, you know, might feel uncomfortable um, asking certain questions, um, you know, um, in a public setting, I'm gonna hold some open office hours at that time for anyone that might wanna come in and have some questions about articles that are on the warrant, um, and wanna be prepared for town meeting. Uh, so all that will be on the community calendar as well, uh, the, the, your Visery and Finance Committee book should be arriving, uh, very shortly, we got some, uh, delivered to the town hall this week, they're on nahat.org, if you go to nahat.org, right on the main page, there's a picture, uh, and it says, annual town meeting, more information, click here, and all relevant information for town meeting is available, I had a quick little button there, so.
Great, thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
So, um, let's see, citizens forum. Open it up and, uh, raise your hand, Tony, or unmute you, identify yourself and your address and.
Hi, you. Tony, you just wanted unmuted me, right?
Yep.
Okay, Francine Amari Faulkner, two nine five Nahat Road. I have a couple of questions, but then at the very end, I have two others. Um, what is the outcome of the USDA cameras and what information have you gotten so far?
Um, I don't know personally.
Uh, you know, US, USDA, uh, has seen some activity, I think, on their cameras. Um, I don't think much of it is consistent. The last I spoke with them, uh, they were gonna be adjusting some of the cameras, but, you know, understood that, you know, we probably likely wouldn't, you know, they're, uh, unless mass wildlife authorized uh, them to come into town for, you know, to run a, a program, um, essentially, they're, they're on hold.
They're on hold, is that what you said, Tony?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I don't, I'm not positive if they still have some cameras out here or not, um, but. Sorry, I have to double check.
Do you know, um, how much has been spent so far on that effort, that part of the effort?
Not off the top of my head, uh, but I, it's probably, I would guess in the range of around five thousand.
Okay.
That's, that's total accumulative, right?
Right.
Yeah.
What we spent.
You know, a year, a year ago.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, and, um, any feeding or, um, trash issues that people are witnessing, what do they do with that?
Uh, well, we have an existing bylaw about, about, um, properly maintaining, um, your waste, so, you know, making sure that it's in a, in a closed container and, um, also rules about dumpsters and things of that nature, so if there's any, uh, there's, you know, if there's any, um, if you're seeing any of that, report it to the town hall and, and we will work into it.
We've reported to who, if you, you say town hall, but who do, who do people contact for that?
They can call the Town Administrator's Office.
Okay, so if you, if you're seeing, uh, food source somewhere, you want people to call the, call your office?
If it has to do with. Yeah, call them, call our office either way. What I'm saying is we, you know, depending on what it is, we currently, until town meet, as you know, we have a article up at town meeting that has to do with feeding of wildlife. Uh, until, if that doesn't, you know, that needs to pass before we have really any type of law on paper for us to enforce, but we do have an existing bylaw related to trash. So, you know, depending on what it is, it, you know, will depend on how we respond, but certainly, you know, just reporting to the Town Administrator's Office and we're working.
Okay, lastly, um, I've noticed, I mean, I'm sure a lot of people do, at the golf course, as, all right, as I understand it, the golf course is owned by the town but is privately leased, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I've noticed there is so much trash all around the perimeter of the golf course. Is there any way for the town to hold that tenant responsible to clean up some of these beer cans, this broken glass, there's, there's just trash around the entire perimeter of the golf course?
We just had, um, we just had the Essex County Sheriff's Office, uh, and community service folks down there cleaning up that, uh, cleaning up the edges, you know, trying to pick trash out of those bushes. Some of that trash dates back a long time, uh, but they've been trying to get, get, you know, clean up all of that stuff that I think you're referring to. Uh, it was just, you know, last week, I think they were down there, so if you do are citing something you saw before last week, it may have already been cleaned up.
It, it, there's a lot, I mean, there's piles of beer cans and bottles and broken glass and, I mean, there's a bazillion golf balls. Like, somebody at some point should go pick up the golf balls that are all over the place down there, into the Fragmities. It's a mess.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad you brought that up, Francie, because, uh, actually earlier, I was gonna mention that, um, SWIM had a beach cleanup plan for last weekend, but it, it got canceled, um, due to the weather. Um, and I wanted to put in my two cents in this citizens forum to, um, encourage people when they take a walk to bring a bag with them and grab, um, you know, grab trash when they see it, um, I know there's a lot of people that walk dogs and, um, it's a great opportunity to just pick up a few things, um, so I'd encourage you to do the same.
I, I do do that, Josh, just so you know, I do often pick stuff up. But golf courses beyond, I mean, it's, it's a mess.
Francine, if you have any, if you have any specific spots or pictures, send them to me.
All right.
Press it with the, uh, with the, let's see.
I'll do that, I'll take some photos.
I'll take a walk around tomorrow as well, see what I see, I'll bring a bag.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Brendan is, is his hand up.
Yep, Brendan, if you can unmute.
Brendan Veronica Olmstead, two Summer Street. Had a follow-up question, um, about the, uh, aerial drone surveys that were done. Did you have any information when, like, a public meeting on presenting the drone survey results was gonna be happening?
So Brendan, I've been going back and forth with the company, um, and we've just been missing each other as far as how our schedules have worked out, um. I'm hoping to, I'm hoping to have that soon. It's been completed, I just simply haven't gotten it myself yet. Uh, so it's just been a, it's just been a little bit of a scheduling nightmare, but, um, it's done, so sometime soon we'll be presenting it, for sure.
Okay, um, and would that be, would it be, like, would you give us, uh, like, a couple of weeks' notice, um?
I'll, it'll probably be here on a Board of Selectment meeting.
Okay.
It'll be on, it'll be on the agenda.
All right, thank you very much.
Alice, um, I saw you unmuted yourself earlier.
Yes, hi, I, I just had a quick follow-up question for Tony, if, if we can't, if people can't make one of, or both of the Monday night informational, uh, meetings to discuss the warrant, will they be taped and available on YouTube or is there another way to see them?
Yep, yes, we'll record them and, uh, we will post them to our YouTube channel, um, and typically, uh, we'll probably run them, you know, on repeat a couple of times too. Uh, but I'll, I'll make sure that they're recorded and, um, you know, we could probably share the link once it's, once it's posted, um, but it's a good point, thank you.
Great, thanks very much.
Tony, I, I wanted to, uh, thank you, Tony, for thinking of that and arranging those meetings, it's a, it's a good, you know, people that aren't necessarily paying attention, close attention year round, go to town meeting and you know, it can be confusing and they're, maybe they're looking at the articles for the first time and, uh, or, or need some background and it helps town meeting goes more smoothy, I think, to, if they have a chance to ask these questions or look into these, uh, issues ahead of time, so this, I just wanted to thank you for taking the initiative to schedule those and host them.
Yep, that's no problem, I, I enjoy doing it selfishly, it helps me as well, you know, because I get to, you know, maybe I'll get a question that I didn't think about and I'll be better prepared for that question at town meeting, you know, ultimately, town meeting is, it's the residents' meeting, you know, so, uh, my job is to inform and recommend, but ultimately, it's up to you, the residents, so the, the more we can do that, the better.
Hey, thanks, thanks, Tony, uh, I see Michelle is on, on, on our call here and I was wondering if she could give us a quick update of, um, of the housing production plan, I know there were a few meetings coming up, um, Michelle, could you give us a quick, quick update on that?
Hi, um, thanks, thanks, Mark, um, in terms of the housing production plan, uh, we met recently, a few weeks ago, and started, um, having the discussion on potential locations, we're going through an analysis right now with MAPC on feasibility. We will be meeting this week and next week to talk more about those sites and the results of the feasibility analysis that MAPC has done. In addition, we're gonna be doing an inventory of, uh, what, um, activities the town has done regarding housing needs for the community, so taking a look at CPC, Housing Authority, Council on the Aging, other committees and boards in terms of trying to improve certain housing needs, so for example, um, if, uh, for the Housing Authority, we've gotten, we've used CPC funding to improve some of the properties, so that is another means of, you know, looking at alternatives in terms of sourcing funds to help kickstart, uh, any of these activities that we're looking to undertake. Um, we are considering right now, and this is late breaking and new, and will be talked about at the committee meeting tomorrow, but we're looking to do a virtual open house in a few weeks, the date is TBD. Um, but the intent is to provide a, a means for residents to, uh, join a Zoom call, ask questions, um, we're gonna post, uh, some of the findings regarding feasibility on sites and then following that virtual open house, we're gonna do an in-person session in June, so more members of the community can come forward with questions, provide us feedback. Um, again, this is all gonna help contribute to the housing production plan. And so, um, you know, excited about some of these things that we're gonna be working on and, uh, looking forward to talking with the committee, uh, tomorrow night, we haven't met for a few weeks, but, uh, it'll be good.
Thank you, Michelle, um, thanks for all the good work you're doing with that, um. Okay, uh, anything else? Citizen forum, anybody else up there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hi, it's Debbie Vander Slice, three sixty eight Nahat Road. Um, Tony, thank you for that comprehensive list of what DPW has done, I see them out there every day, multiple times, and I know they're just so dedicated to making our town look beautiful, but I just have, um, two little suggestions that they might put on the, on the bottom of their very lengthy list. Um, whenever I drive down, I guess it's Spring Road, where I believe the town calls it family housing, chapter two hundred housing, those duplex houses, they really look like they could use a power wash, they're really kinda dirty. And the other thing is, when I go by Spindrift. And the other thing is, when I go by Spindrift, um, the sign looks like it needs some work. It's like, it's just in really bad shape. And I just think because our town looks so pretty in general, that it would be great to just address those two little things.
Thanks, Deb.
Thank you, Deb. Uh, so both of those are actually Housing Authority-controlled properties. So what I'll do is, uh, I'll share that with, um, with, uh, the executive director. What is the, the, the sign? And what sign are you referring to at Spinder?
Um, the one over the, I believe it's the main entrance. It's, it's like a wooden sign with engraving in it. It's, it's just all, um, like it needs to be repainted or something. It, it looks like it's in very bad shape.
Might be a good one to, uh, to tie in with the other signs you're looking into making, Tony.
Yeah.
To have a similar, um, look, um, you know, aesthetic.
Yeah, 'cause like the police station has a really nice sign and when you drive into Nahant, obviously there's a really nice sign. So it just looks a little inconsistent when you go by Spindrift.
Both, both the, um, the hot town halls and the hot library green signs need repainting too. And I have had a hard time finding someone, uh, that could refurbish those, so that's on my list as well. If I thought, you know, hopefully if I can find someone for those, I can, you know, include the Spinder sign on it too.
I bet you Lynn Spencer could maybe recommend somebody since she deals with, you know, preservation and painters and things like that. So maybe shoot Lynn an, an email.
Yeah. Good idea.
Thank you, Deb. Anybody else? Comments? Okay, I'm seeing none. Um, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Remove that, uh, the board of selectmen meeting adjourned. Seconded.
She's made, made seconded in discussion. Seeing, hearing that, all in favor?
Josh, enter mine.
Gene can't, the eye.
I can't lie.
Pretty, pretty quick meeting with the new chairman there.
Flying along.
I'll see you tomorrow.